The Wusakka City Council to order for Monday, February 28, 2022, Rogue Cloud, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoyar.
Here.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Gillette.
Here.
Councilwoman Sierra.
Here.
Councilman Susie.
Here.
Councilman Wood.
Here.
President Jennings.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item on the agenda is a discussion regarding the former Sacred Heart Church development, with the mayor to introduce the developer and team will share a plan regarding the project and request for TSA. So, Mayor, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors and everyone here this evening. What we have before us, I think, is a very exciting project. I know over the years we've had different churches that have been decommissioned, and I think we have a great project before us. And PowerPoint was sent to folks about four or five days ago, so you have an opportunity to review it. The administration met with the owners, Greg and Isabella Rice, and the rest of their team, who's actually here today. We wanted to make sure this evening that any questions that you have could hopefully be answered in order for us to be able to move forward with the potential project. So, you saw the PowerPoint. We have everyone here that can answer the questions that you may have. I see you have the screen on. Are we going to watch the PowerPoint together?
I don't know. They requested that we have the facilities available, so it's... I guess are you planning on...
Yes.
Okay. If you want to go through the PowerPoint, we have all seen it, so you don't have to read page by page, but if you want to go through at a high level and get to the last page, where it says "ASK." So, no, but if you want to take it away.
Is this microphone?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And ma'am, that microphone in front of you is working if you have to speak as well.
Okay, good evening. My name is Gregory Rice, but they call me Fried Rice. Everybody loves fried rice. And today we have our architects, Amy Lombardo, Amy. And Amy's the managing principal of ZES in Providence and Washington DC, so we're very thankful for her joining this project. And also Andy, who is her project manager. Andy, thank you. And then we have Ben, the builder of Bentley Builders out of Warwick and Hafenog. And Mike Laschinsky of Laschinsky Finance, who has been helping with this ASK for the TSA, so Mike, thank you. And personal advisors, my father, Dad, Johnny Rice, my wife, Isabella, Emilio Dispirito, as well as Don Martone and Nick Dagnillo, so thank you all. Next slide. That's it. Fried Rice. There we go. Does anybody know where this is? It's not in Rhode Island, it's in Connecticut. It's Nordytuck, Connecticut. Means land by the river, and that's where I was born. It's a town of about 31,000 people, similar demographics to Wusakka. And I bring this up because it also went through the same transformation as Wusakka. Very vibrant in the 1800s, early 1900s, and then tinkered off after World War II. And as I was born in 1991, these mills were all becoming closed, so they've been reused. But the point of this here is that the next wave, my generation, the adaptive reuse is going to be churches. So that's kind of why I tie this together, is that the mills are pretty much all spoken for. And we feel that this church is the first of many, unfortunately, that are closing, that you need to do something. And I brought what we can't do with the church. And just some of the highlights. Paranormal gatherings, drugstore, massage parlors, live performances, billiards, pool halls, pinball, video games, a tavern, bar, nightclub, tattoos, body piercing, pornographic, soft pornographic, human abortion. These are all things that you can't do at the church. So really, what's left? Apartments or condos, but apartments is what this would be. Thirty-three apartments, so, next slide. And I wanted to make this perfectly clear, this is not low-income housing. Wusakka has enough, I know that. I own a lot of property. And low-income housing is not a bad thing, it's just we need some diversity. We need a shot of gasoline, and this will be that shot. These are not going to be cheap rents. These are going to be townhouses inside of a church nave. People are going to pay up. And that's what this city needs, in my opinion. Next.
Excuse me one minute, sir. Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Is that showing up okay on that?
Limited.
Okay, but is the angle okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
No problem. So, Amy, if you want to jump up now and kind of quickly give us a bird's eye view of what we're going to do in the layout?
Absolutely. So, if you'll excuse me, can you hear me from here so I can...
You can take the mic right out of the stand, if it's...
I'm going to need to add this slide, so I'm going to stick right here.
Sure.
Okay, we can bet. I think that's the optimal view for everyone, so you can see what's going on here. So I am a Lombardo ZES architect managing principal, and the project that is in question and in development is here at 415 Olo Street, also between Second and Third Avenue. The... Hit the slides here. So this is a great opportunity to apply some rehabilitation to this and adaptive reuse to this structure, which was previously the Sacred Heart Church. The task that we have been tasked with is to redesign this structure for multifamily apartments, market rate multifamily apartments. We will present to you some quick plans. I'm going to try to go quickly through them so that we can get right to the financials faster. But we have designed some plans at a conceptual level that will demonstrate a fit of over thirty apartments within this parish, the parish hall and the corresponding rectory along this side. So here we have the parish hall, which most people aren't familiar with. I would think several from the area might be familiar with this beautiful structure that's up there on Olo Street and Second Street. It's a beautiful structure. It's over forty feet tall. boasts a beautiful tower in the back. It has, as you can see, a typical basilica style with beautiful arches and domes and ornate cast iron columns. Some lovely arched windows, and you can see on the front facade that faces Second Street, it has a floret style window that is prominent and quite beautiful. But it's not the only structure that's on this property that is being studied. Also on this same property is a rectory, that's a three-story residential style building. It has already seven suite-style dormitories for the priests. And it is attached to a parish hall, which is a multipurpose space that's a single story. Again, that space is a standard residential style construction, multi-purpose construction. And the goal is to take all of those three properties and utilize them for multifamily apartments. They are all on one lot, but included also in this property is, diagonally from this, is the open lot, which is utilized currently for parking and would be utilized for that in the future. Beginning with the parish, you can see here on the first floor, we would be recommending to place into there using the rhythm of the bays that already exist. We have one, two, three, four, eight, eight total apartments on the first floor. These would be single-story apartments. The type of apartments that we're creating in here are not very large. They're smaller-scale apartments, studios, one-bedrooms, or lofted bedrooms. That you'll see, there's only a handful of one-bedroom plus. Those are one-bedroom plus again. Something perhaps maybe is a room that couldn't get a window, so it was classified as a den, but there's only a handful of those. The majority of them are of the smaller scale. We would be proposing to maximize the potential use of this beautiful structure by inserting a second floor level into here, so it would be a new structure inside the old structure. And by so doing, we can create another level of apartments, and these apartments then we suggest would be loft-style apartments. In that on the first, on this second floor level, you would have bathrooms, a kitchen, small living spaces, and then internal to each unit, a staircase up to a lofted bedroom. And this would be the lofted bedroom level. I think it's a lot easier to understand this when we just take a glimpse at the section which was included in our package. You can see on the first floor would be the single-story apartments that we would propose in the conceptual design. And then the second floor would have the base layer or the main level of the loft apartments, and they all have internal stairs that lead up to a nice lofted bedroom above. And you can see how this layout really helps to take advantage of the beautiful sloped ceilings in this space, really takes advantage of the expansive height in this space. And it's just working with the architecture that they're not against it. It's what we're trying to do, is we understand this is a basilica-style layout. It's not a typical open, wide-open mill layout, so we have to get a little creative with our unit types. And this is how we have, at least at a conceptual level, have designed our approach here. Also on this slide, as we get discussed, there is a parish hall and a rectory, which are standing stark contrast to the parish itself, which is tall and narrow. This is obviously got a little more of a short and wide floor plan. One thing that is a great feature of this particular floor plan is that the parish hall is ungrade, which could be a great amenity for multifamily housing. I think that could be a desirable feature. It's easy to turn. We propose one accessible, fully accessible unit that's ungraded, but we have the advantage of having some others also that are ungraded. And I think that could be a great feature for the city and its citizens that might be interested in it. In all, it's a very easy change and shift from the previous suite style that was inside of the rectory, to change those from seven suites to seven apartments with minor interventions, simply just improving the egress stairs that are in there and adding a more proper stair to the basement. It's a very reasonable and modest intervention. As you can see, most of these interventions aren't on the interior of the building, but we intend to only make interventions to the exteriors of buildings as needed to support this project and what's being included. So that could be wherever HVAC needs something taped or those sorts of things. But we are not making substantial exterior improvements to this building or changes to the building, and we are not making any additions. We are working within the fabric of the structures that are there. These will be our floor, this is the rectory, and just to show you how much of the space is being utilized and proposed to be utilized. And before I move on to, and take this over to Mr. Laschinsky and back to Mr. Rice for the financial portion, I just wanted to mention that we, as architects, are trying to advocate for the reuse of important and prominent structures in our urban fabric. I think this qualifies as exactly that type of structure. We've been excited about this project since day one. It's not an easy project, and it's not for the faint of heart. It will require surgical-like structural interventions inside of it. It will not accommodate your average, very cookie-cutter or typical unit layout. It takes a lot of creativity, and it's going to take a team that has a lot of desire for solutions. This team, to date, we're only in our schematic design level, and every time as an architectural team and advisor, I speak to this team and I show them the limitations of this building and what it can do and what these buildings can do, the team goes immediately into solution mode. And that's been fantastic. And I just think that this is a perfect example of a structure in our urban fabric that deserves to be rehabilitated. I believe that the future use of this building, its best and brightest future use, is as multifamily. I think it will allow this area and this neighborhood to thrive in the future, and I fully support this project.
Good. So when we met with the city a few weeks ago, they said that since this is outside of the downtown district, there's no structured TSA application process, so it was more informal, and that's why we're here today. So originally, we were thinking of a fifteen-year TSA and waiting for the CO to be issued before taxes started. But then I spoke with interim assessor Perry, and she said the best way to approach it would be to follow the twelve-year framework that you currently use. So that is why we structured it this way, just for whatever that is worth. So, Mike, would you like to come up?
Any of those mics work, so you can...
Oh, okay, sir. Hey, good evening. My name is Michael Laschinsky, and I do underwriting and capital sourcing for projects like this. And I've been dragged for a few years, and I'm excited to be part of this. I know the formatting got a little changed when we converted our different PDFs, so I don't know. We'll see how it comes on this monitor. But you used to have a printout of everything, right?
Yes.
Good. So if you have any questions, you can stop me at any time. But what I, like, wanted to sort of, like, this slide. What I did on this slide is I wanted to demonstrate our pro forma in sort of revenue that we're using market rates. And for operating expenses, you can see on the next slide, our debt cover ratio, which is that-to-cover. We're pretty much at, like, the minimum that a bank would allow for us to get financing. And that's pretty a big part of why we're asking for this tax stabilization payment, because if we kind of drop below that 1.2, it would be kind of hard for us to pull this deal off. And that's why we ask for tax treaties when we do. We ask for them when we need them, to make a project successful. So, yeah. And I can go through mine a little faster and as comfortable maybe as Amy on the microphone, but...
Council President?
Yes.
Councilor Wood. I don't want to be the skunk at the garden party, but I know you mentioned the twelve-year applies to the downtown overlay district. But for the rest of the city, I believe we're governed by a state statute, 4439.1, that limits us to a ten-year tax stabilization agreement specifically labeled for Wusakka. Again, not to throw monkey wrench into ours, but it's just, I thought it was ten years. That's why I looked it up, and I saw the twelve, and I was informed that it applies to the overlay district, but this is not in that. And so tended to go with by the state statute that provides for ten years. So I'm not less interested, but I just wanted to point that out. Maybe something to be researched before you plan this.
Yeah. Yeah, we know we're not in the downtown district. We're, by a right or administrative decision, can apply for the twelfth year. But we have, and then you say it's under the state statute. We have been successful with other projects in Rhode Island with...
I'm only speaking for the one that specifically says Wusakka. Exemption of stabilization of taxes for qualified property located in designated districts in the city. So I think it's something worthy of research before any commitment is given.
Sure.
And final plans, do you need?
Sure. So, yep, no problem. Yep. We have our legal that we can, you know, discuss with and see how that pans out. Let's see here. On this slide, I just wanted to demonstrate that this would be like a close to a $6 million investment in the building in Wusakka. So again, go back to the debt service coverage ratio. If we had this TSA, we could make a $6 million investment in the building and in Wusakka. And on the next slide, I wanted to demonstrate, right now, the building itself is paying no taxes. And we would increase the tax liability to $34,000 a year. And you can see here in the first three years, it's abated on the same kind of situation that you would get in a downtown district. And then it's phasing at 0.1% during the remaining years to get to 100% in year twelve. If you want to go to the next slide. I just wanted to demonstrate here, you can see in a graph what that phase looks like on an annual basis. And on the next slide, that's just the accumulated taxes over the time horizon. So it would be an additional close to $20,000 for the city over the twelfth-year period. And then it would be at $35,000, $34,000 plus thousand in perpetuity. And it just goes to our ASK, which is that twelfth-year treaty with the first three years frozen today, and then you go 0.1% phasing over the rest of the ASK, which is what it is during, in the downtown district. And we can talk to legal and see, but that is our ASK today.
Councilman Canoyar.
The, I think you showed the debt services being... The, oh, $386,000 a year, is that correct?
Yeah, $386,000, that's right.
So what is that, what's the total, so the investment is $5.8 billion, $5,770, I think?
Yes.
Yeah. And how much of that is financing debt? What's the total debt?
Yeah, it's a majority of it. I don't have the exact numbers, but... Ninety-eight percent.
Well, I'll just tell you right up front, and again, to quote my colleague up to the state meeting, I'll be giving a skunk to the party, but I've got a hard time, excuse me, giving tax stabilization agreements, particularly for ten years or twelve years, for this type of project. For residential-type projects. You know, we've done some TSAs in the past for businesses that come in and provide jobs, provide taxes and jobs. Residential, you know, is going to require services for the... You don't want the rope cloud, you don't want the firefighters to show up if there's a problem, you don't want the police to show up if there's an issue, et cetera. And I understand your issue with the 1.2 coverage, but at ninety-eight percent debt, maybe I need to create more equity. So I will just tell you, I'm willing to listen more. I could potentially be convinced to do something, but I honestly struggle with doing TSAs for these type of projects. We've got one that's city-owned property, which is a much larger project that we've considered doing a TSA for, but again, it's a much bigger scale and it's city-owned property. Usually when people want a TSA, they come to us before they acquire the property and make it a contingency of their acquisition. So, with that out, I'll listen to whatever everyone else has to say, but I will just be right up front that I struggle with doing this type of tax rate for residential development. Just the president.
Councilman Susie.
Yeah, I kind of disagree with that, only because I'm seeing a profit that we're getting zero dollars on right now. And we're going to potentially make, whether it's after three years or more, after ten years. I mean, that's, you know, I always go to the side of making something over nothing, so I'm excited about refurbishing, especially these churches. You're right, that's just on my, I mean, they're going to be, many of these churches, we know, because they're settling in our city right now, and there's many who want to come sadly. I think this is a wonderful concept of something that preserves the integrity of that place and at the same time provides good housing, like I said, you know, market rate, which is in need. And we get our taxes, that we're not getting any of right now, so I can't see the downside right now. So, but I would be more than open to learn more. Thank you.
I do have a question before we move on. When you calculate the $34,000 tax rate, what is that based on for a property value?
Yes, we, I had it in one of our slides, I maybe got cut out.
$9.90.
$9.90, that's right.
So it's...
Thirty K per unit.
I'm sorry?
Thirty thousand per unit.
Yeah, it should be on...
So, a $6 million project is going to have a net worth of $990,000?
Which is going to have an assessed value.
Yeah, taxed assessed, which is never in line with appraisal or market or listing. There are always disconnects in every municipality.
At the moment, I have about forty apartments that I own in the city, and I did a quick average, and they roughly average about $40,000 per unit in assessed value. So we understand it's lower than the average. It's definitely not the same condition as some of the properties that I own, but we're just looking at the density and as the overall contribution to the community for that type of assessment.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on?
Mr. President.
Councilman Gillette.
When Councilman Wood informed you about the state saying ten years rather than the twelve years you're looking for, if it ends up in that way, are you looking at maybe not doing a project? Is that, I was looking at a facial expression when the ten-year number was brought out in comparison to the twelve-year and didn't...
It's fine. Ten or twelve, nine or thirteen, it doesn't matter. We'll work with whatever the offer is, but we need something, is our message.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Wood?
Yes.
Uh, he, now, thank you. The downtown overlay, twelve-year, was there, is there a round general rule that backs up that?
You know, I asked the same, frankly, it was a conversation ahead of Councilman Canoyar, and he was the one to point it out to me that the downtown overlay had the twelve-year. And that was exactly my question to him, and I haven't had a chance to look that up to find out if it's specified as an exception or if it's something that was done without consideration of this legislation. But it's something that probably should be looked into. And I'm not sure how many other, how many properties within the overlay district are currently under TSA, if any. But it's, it just seemed, I recollected that there was a ten-year threshold in general across the state, and that's why I went to look it up, because when I saw the twelve-year, it just didn't seem like it fits. And I didn't know where the twelve-year came from, so when I looked it up, I found the ten-year. I just think it's something that we should then answer to.
Is that the actual printout from?
Yeah.
When is the last year that that was amended?
It wasn't amended at all. It's dated 1991.
Ninety-one?
Yeah. Which, I'm not sure what issue was being addressed in 1991, but I'm sure, because it's specific to Wusakka, I'm sure it was being dealt for some specific reason that it would be put through legislation. But there's no amendment, it's just made one.
All right, so I think we'll maybe a quickie now to the city solicitoring. I'll be back tomorrow.
I was, I was sort of expecting to ask him the question.
I'm sitting in the seat.
From his chair, so he got...
I was just, if the councilors are finished, I'd just like to...
No, you made more questions.
Okay. No, I just think, I'll reiterate what I said. I think it's a great project. I think that we are in a situation where one of the councilors, I think Councilman Susie said that we have plenty of churches, unfortunately, that are closing. I was in one of the closed churches today for a funeral. I drove by once to get here. And there's more coming, as we know. It was on the front page of the newspaper. I feel that the Fairmont section of Wusakka is in dire need of having units of this caliber. We hear from folks who feel that there aren't choices within Fairmont for housing. And I believe that the majority of the council has expressed to me before the desire to have units that can help millennials who are getting out of college, newly appointed firefighters, police... new, newly appointed firefighters, police officers, teachers, nurses, even doctors who are coming in as residents who are not making enough to sustain their own mortgage. And to invest nearly $6 million in the North End or $6 million in East 1 socket is something we don't see. But certainly investing $6 million in the Fairmont section where people feel that that section does not get the type of investment that other sections of the city get, I think this is something that I applaud everyone who's here this evening. Certainly, you don't see many people coming before us looking to invest $6 million in our city. And this could be the first of many projects moving forward. And certainly bringing 33 units on is a huge accomplishment. We're building single-family homes, which I think is wonderful. And we should always have the ability to utilize our lots for single-family homes. We shouldn't be forced into making them multifamily. But to be able to capitalize on a large apostle like this, not have it left vacant. It's been left vacant, does anyone know how long it's been vacant? It's got to be three or four years? No?
A little longer than that.
Longer?
No, I'd say you're probably right. I, because that, that was my parish at one time, so.
So in three or four years, and I could be wrong again. But I don't think we've had anyone else come forward with any idea of what to do with this particular church. And to not, what's, what's very important to me also is they're not putting a sledgehammer to the beauty of the church. And they're keeping the character of the church in place. It was pointed out twice that it is working within the means of the church and not altering the exterior. So you end up keeping the beauty of the exterior of the property also. There's no issue with parking. I know we've had issues in some cases with parking for development. There's no issue with parking. So sometimes you've got to get to get, and this, to me, seems like this is, this is the time. I know I don't have a vote like you folks have a vote, but I think bringing 33 units on into our portfolio as a community is certainly something that should be applauded. So I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank you.
Before you wrap up, can I just ask a few questions and there may be more questions? And I don't know, it might be to your architect, but when I look at the total unit count, it identifies 10 microunits, which are stated as being 375 to 377 square feet. So I'm assuming that the second and third floor together encompass like a tomhouse-type microunit? So it's 197 and then 177 on the first and second floor, is that?
That is correct.
Okay.
On some of the units, a total of 10 units are in that configuration and of that scale.
And then the, what are the, what do we consider micro loss?
I don't think, I don't think it can be over 50.
Can it be under? I thought it was a, it was a minimum. And we can check on that. I thought there was a minimum and a maximum.
Again, I'm not sure if that applies to the downtown legislation that we have.
Okay.
Because of trying to keep the commercial.
Stockroom.
On the first level and then the second floor, second and, and above, not having so much square footage that it becomes three-bedroom units in our downtown area.
Okay.
But we have to check.
Good, all right. Thank you. And thank you for that. I, I kind of thought, but I wasn't sure. I'm not an architect, so I didn't know how to read it exactly. So are there any other questions or comments from the council?
Mr. President?
Councilman Gillette?
This all comes to mind. Now that you know there's a possibility you might only have a 10-year gap. That question and the amount of money that you might need in the, for that tax stabilization from the city, are you going to be talking to us again on this? Are you going to look into this stuff? And, because I, I don't think there is anyone who was ready for Councilman Ward's numbers as far as the 10-year is concerned. I hope the mayor is correct and that's just for a certain area, not necessarily for Fairmont. But are your plans to talk to the council again?
No.
So you're looking for something substantial this evening?
Tonight.
There, there won't be anything tonight. There's not even a deciding.
It can't be, it can't be a vote tonight?
No, I, it, it won't be a vote tonight. We don't have the, anything to, we, I mean, even just with the councilman brought up about the 10-year, we could, we, I don't know how we could even act on it. If the 10-year law is, is a case and we approve, if we were to approve something that was presented this evening, there is, there is no mechanism in place for us to approve anything tonight. And I think you heard one councilman identified an issue. I, I'd probably fall somewhere in the middle that I, I think I'd like to see, obviously want to see something done with the facility and I would be supportive of, of something. But I certainly, when I looked at the plan that was presented, the payment plan, with the 12-year, the first three years being 0, 0, 0, I was not prepared to support that at all. So if you want to have your legal look into the issues with the Rhode Island general law and then see what you can best work with and bring something back, but there's nothing, it will require another visit to this council.
When?
When? Can you put your information together?
March 14th, is that the next year?
I don't know what March, March 14th isn't a.
Was that, that was one of the two options that we were presented with tonight or, or actually the 14th is what we were told and then we requested tonight instead.
Oh, is that our off Monday?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Then yes, we could do the March 14th.
That's fine. And hopefully we can square it up in the meantime and get an answer to Councilman Ward's point and work up something else.
Well, I'd like to do this, just so that we don't waste anybody's time. I'd like to, we have absolutely no provision, and I'm going to be clear with this, we have no provision this evening for a vote. And I'm going to ask that as you speak to these gentlemen, you do not in any way, shape or form come across as a, as a vote. But I think if you can give an indication that if, is, is it worth them coming back with something? And, you know, is, what's a reasonable timeframe? I mean, I'm, I'm thinking more in the single digits of seven years, eight years, nine years, but with an impact from day one. But what is, what is?
I'm sure I'm supportive of it. So by next meeting, certainly, once you come back with some, some options for us, right, that we can look at and discuss a little more comprehensively. But certainly, to reiterate, I'm, I'm excited about this to see something like that continue in its, in its beranger, so to speak, in serving a need at the same time and getting us some taxes that we don't have at all right now. So yeah, I'd love to see three options, maybe, that you can, you know, see what we, what we feel like that night. When would a vote actually take place?
Well, if, if we have a resolution before us, is it a resolution or an ordinance? An ordinance, so it would require an ordinance. But if we could have an ordinance, we can't do an ordinance at a special meeting. So the. We can, we can have the work session on the 14th, but then the ordinance, we could definitely give you a better gauge on what the situation would be. But ordinances can only be passed at two consecutive regular meetings. So.
We need the, the 21st and 4th.
Yeah, I think that would be, but we need to have a work session on the 14th first. So a work session on the 14th, as Councilman Susie says, a few different options that you can work with and something that might be palatable to the council. And then we could have the ordinance drafted in time for the 21st and then a second passage at the next regular meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay. But anybody else weigh in, Councilman Gillette?
Just so I know, I live down the street from where this project is, okay? And I would love to see something done with that property. I wouldn't want to see it get knocked down, okay? But in, through discussions, it has to work for both sides, okay? Like council president, I'm, I'm in the middle right now. I need to look at the numbers a little bit more, but I'm kind of leading the old way. Let's, let's see if we can work something out, okay?
Anybody else? Then I think, let's, let's plan, Madam Clerk, if you can schedule us for the 14th. And if, anything that you get prior to that, if you can forward to the city clerks, you can distribute it to us. And at least when we come into the meeting, we'll have, like we had tonight, with something that we can actually read and then we're not having to take so much of your time to go over it.
Yeah. And Councilwoman's here, do you have any feedback for us?
No, not at the moment. I'm, this is a presentation. I'm definitely supportive of any new project, but I too would like to hear a little bit more. Something about the, about what we need.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And any other questions from you for us?
No.
That's all. Thank you so much. Thank you.